Call to order, the July 11th City of Longview Council Meeting. First is our invocation and pledge, and that will be led tonight by Thrive Longview Student London Johnston and Program Coordinator Yasmin Gordon. I would also like to recognize Director Clint Holmes, who I saw somewhere there. There we go. Thrive Longview is a teen character development program for middle school aged teens. Thank you guys for being here. Please stand.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, we thank you for our city. We thank you for the opportunity of being here, and most importantly, we thank you for the city council. We pray that you would provide wisdom and guidance for the best interests of our city. We hope that whatever happens, our community will be impacted and want to strive to be better. And we just hope that we can spread our light in this city of Longview. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen. All right, if you all join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Thank you, guys. First up is our citizen comment time, and I'd like to first welcome Dr. Marla Shepherd with a special welcome to Longview, and thank you for joining us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Ishahara and council members and community. I'd first like to take the opportunity to get up here and introduce myself to the community. I am Marla Shepherd, and I am the newly appointed superintendent of Longview ISD. And I would like to offer you the opportunity to first view my 100-day plan, which is listed on our website. And also, I'd like to invite everyone to become involved in some of the community events that we will have. I'll have some community town halls so that I can listen and learn from the community. So I'd like to invite as many people out as possible as we begin to announce those dates. Hopefully, you can become involved, and we can figure out how we can together make Longview ISD the best. We don't want it to be a premier district, but we want Longview to be the premier district in America. So I'm looking for you all to come out and get involved. Thank you so much for the warm welcome, and I am excited to be here.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Next on my list, I have Joyce Williams.
Good afternoon, Christian, Mayor Ishahara.
Hi, Joyce.
My comments is centered around the Stamper Pool. So I'm not sure if it's actually in this timeframe, but we'll go. I've been reading about this, and I've done the research, and I'm here as a lifelong resident of South Longview. I no longer live there, but my heart is there. My question to the council is, why not Stamper? If we're building pools based on our 86,000 new members, why not Stamper? One of my main concerns is, as I worked in the industry with youth and Service Boys and Girls Club for over eight years, I saw the disparity in the inability of some of our kids to swim. They are, they have a disparity to drown more often times than their counterparts. They don't have access or accessibility to swimming. I was very fortunate at the time I grew up, and you hear all of the nostalgia. It's not nostalgia, it's facts. I grew up and had the opportunity to learn to swim because it was accessible, and it was near me, and it was in walking distance, and there were lifeguards that invited us to swim. I invariably grew up and turned into a lifeguard. I was a lifeguard for ARC, a swim coach for East Texas Lightning and Special Olympics. None of this wouldn't have happened if I did not have access to a swimming pool and access to life-saving techniques and also some life skills. My question is, if we're considering the whole picture, why not Stamper? I know this city's cut up in quadrants, and I think that accessibility is the main issue. I'm not sure what the feasibility looks like, but if it's geographical, I don't think that's a feasible problem. My thought process is, I'm asking the city council to please consider, for the safety of the youth that I work with, consider the swimming pool at Stamper. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Next, I have Kami Herrera.
Kami Herrera, 103 East Lynnwood Lane, 75604. Good evening, city council members and Madam Mayor. Thank you for the discussions you all have brought to our community, and the work started with the work session you held this past Tuesday to start the process of planning for the future of aquatics here in our city. We cannot change the decisions and mistakes of the past. We can only make decisions now for a better future while also correcting the mismanagement of certain aspects of our city. As we all know, this is a much bigger, this is much bigger than our parks and recreation. Past decisions have given you all a seemingly difficult task, if not many tasks across multiple departments to make decisions on to help move our city forward in a positive direction. As myself and other citizens have stated in past meetings, we do not feel our voices are being listened to. There have been decisions made by our city council that have been made without proper homework. At the work session Tuesday, homework had been started to determine the most equitable plan for our city for aquatics. I am excited for more work sessions to come for not just aquatics in our areas in Longview, but in other areas in Longview that need dedicated attention. Tonight on the agenda is an action item requesting $3.5 million out of our savings for a city pool at Stamper Park. I ask where the itemized data is for this pool. Do we know with certainty this pool will only cost $3.5 million? Do we know the projected maintenance cost? Do we have data to show that the pool would be utilized similarly to our other facilities that are currently in use? An aquatics comprehensive plan to discuss with the citizens has not been decided on yet. While this would cost money for consultants and take time, it will get us the data and the community outreach many of our citizens, like myself, have been asking for. Do we need more than one city pool? Absolutely, yes. Do we need to make sure we have places for swim lessons? Without a doubt, yes. Is spending millions without proper, is spending millions without proper data the best decision? I do not know. However, if I had the choice between spending millions now or spending money on a consultant for a comprehensive plan that could get Longview a new city pool in the best, absolute best location for our residents, I would choose to wait years for a new pool and do a comprehensive plan. This shouldn't be about getting a pool in the city districts or neighborhoods we live in. It should be about the city of Longview as a whole. What worked in the 1970s, 80s, and 90s may not work for the time we live in now. Several of you have taken the time to talk to me about the city as a whole and the many facets and factors that factor in when making these decisions. I've appreciated it so much, and it has helped me understand at a deeper level. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is the end of the speaker cards that I have tonight. We will move on to presentation items. First, Presentation A, Presentation Regarding Fund Balance and the City Council Policy Regarding Same. Angela Cohen had to be out tonight, so that will be led by Rollin McPhee, our city manager.
Yes, my apologies for you being stuck with me to explain this, but it was a family emergency. So if all of you would please hold Angela Cohen in your thoughts and prayers during this time. The brief presentation is intended to give an overview of the City of Longview's general fund balance and reserves. What is this? What is its current status? And for what has this been used? Generally speaking, the fund balance is an accounting term that simply means cash reserves, after which all revenues and expenses have been received or debited, typically at the end of the fiscal year. On the screen, you'll see our current estimates for the city's fund balance at the end of this current fiscal year. When we discuss the fund balance, I'd like to talk about it in two different categories. There is a 10% required fund balance reserve, which is shown as $9.5 million, and the remaining cash in excess of the 10% required reserves. The reasons we separate the cash reserves into these two categories is because the city council adopted a policy that requires maintaining those cash reserves of at least 10% of the annual operating expenses, which leaves about $20 million in our fund balance. You'll see the city council policy set aside regarding the 10%, and it is to be used in an emergency or economic downturn to maintain our operations. If you would, think of this as something for natural or financial disasters where cash flows are interrupted, but we still need to provide those services to our citizens. Although our policy doesn't specifically instruct us on how we should use that fund balance above the 10%, there are best practices and past uses that should guide and govern behaviors. And generally, we spend that fund balance on one-time purchases that don't impact our future budget. Let me give you an example. If an item already has budgeted maintenance costs associated with it, such as a building where we're making improvements, it may make sense for fund balance usage. We've also used these funds in the past for lighting improvements, which become more efficient and reduce operating costs in the future, and for our ERP software, which is something we've used to improve efficiencies of our administrative functions. Alternatively, these funds have been used when there is an unanticipated expense or an opportunity to partner with a grant or for a significant project, or for maybe storm damage beyond our normal capacity to deal with. There are some past expenses that are listed. We've used fire trucks a number of times. We've recently built a pickleball court parking lot. So I'd like to move our attention to a chart that shows the health of our fund balance over time, with the 10% required minimum shown in red, annual allocation shown in green, and the blue showing the amount above the 10%. In particular, from a selfish standpoint, I'd like to draw your attention to the two most recent budget years in '23 and '24, which are the two budgets that I have presented to this council. The adopted budget, since I have been city manager, have not included those use of fund balance, and the expenditures shown of that fund balance were actually budget amendments that were brought forward for council consideration and budget amendments that were spent. We've used that fund balance for one-time expenditures such as the pickleball parking lot in particular, and most recently, in the pool situation. Lastly, and I know you've heard me talk about this a number of different times, I sound like a broken record. There are external factors, including not only our current inflation struggles, but there are legislative constraints, not only in the past, but in the future, that impact our revenue and impact our sustainability for our local finances. So the strategic use of that fund balance becomes even more crucial. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Rollin, I know that we are starting our budget at the council meeting next week.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you speak to how that general operating budget is working this year? Will that be tight? Will we have excess money? What is that forecast?
Yes, ma'am. The actual, and I spoke about this at the work session, our directors have done a phenomenal job. Most of them are in the audience. They've done a phenomenal job adjusting their budgeting for what they need during a given year and for what they can accomplish in any given year. They did that once again in their request to the city manager's office and the budget team. However, our requested expenses were $102.5 million in estimate, and our current revenues that we suspect for this coming year are $95 million. So that's basically an 8% increase, if you will. If you'll give me a little latitude in rounding up and down. So that 8% constraint, we've had to already cut back the 8% to match our revenues, because I have told city council I will bring to you a balanced budget each year. We have not done one-time purchases, because the money that we budgeted in this fiscal year coming, what I plan to present to council, doesn't have a lot of huge one-time expenditures, because the revenue that we are going to receive just covers our operating expenses. One of the things that happens is that we get our revenue in three general sources. We get it from the general fund revenue. We get three sources: property taxes, there's sales taxes, and there's permits, fees, and fines. So a third of our revenues, if you will, we'll just round 90 million, we'll say 30 million, that is constrained to a 3.5%. And our property tax, by far, is the most stable source of revenue that we have. That is constrained. What that does is it leaves us to the sales tax, and then the permits, fines, and fees, or usage costs. As the economy downturns and we receive less sales tax, the permits, fines, and fees also go down, because people have less sustainable income and less, they can't afford as much. And so it puts an opposite crunch. So while we currently, and in the coming fiscal year, in the times that we're in, we have a constraint on all three sides. And so as property taxes are unable to keep up, we become more reliable on those volatile revenue sources, which means that savings account or the reserve fund could be impactful in the future years, depending on what additional legislation is brought our way to restrict our revenues. And just as a point of note, the sales tax and property tax that you send as taxpayers and as citizens, that amount of money that you send to the city, two and a half times more than that is going to the state, but they are continuing to limit our revenues locally. And so, all three of these factors, take into account that this is, this is going to continue to provide additional challenges, and needless to say, I'm less than optimistic that we'll get relief from the state legislature when they go back in session this year.
Thank you. Would you confirm for me that I requested cost of living increases for staff, and that will not be able to be included in the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
And that the road maintenance that we would typically provide to make sure that our roads are maintained correctly, we have had to cut some costs to maintain a balanced budget for the upcoming year?
That is part of the proposal I'm preparing now.
So would it be fair to say, if I were doing this personally and looking at my general operating budget, I should be thinking about where I can retain savings, because I may need them to support my light bill, my utility bill, things that would be ongoing bills, general annual budget?
Yes, ma'am, that would be fair.
Anybody else have questions for Mr. McPhee?
I do.
Good.
Rollin, where did this money come from?
It's been built up over a series of years.
What years did it start building up drastically?
Could we pull back up the chart?
Was it the COVID money?
In 2021, there was an allocation of, there was $17.1 million in COVID funds. $10 million, if I remember off the top of my head, was allowable to supplement general operations and maintenance or general costs. There were public safety costs that were eligible. There was 10% that you could basically use to offset the decrease in revenues. Beyond that, the 7% that we used was specifically, had to be allocated for projects that qualified for the ARPA usage. So I will say that at times, our revenues bounced back much quicker than the COVID funds anticipated. The intent of those COVID funds were to go back into that, but some of the ways we use that, in particular last year, was not only doing capital projects, but also preventing our current rate increase, last year's proposed rate increases for water and sewer. We use that by driving down the capital contribution of the utility department.
So before the COVID money came in, we were pretty much balancing budget year to year, since I've been on here since 2016. We've held that $10 million, $10 million savings account and pretty much been able to hold that and be sustained.
In 2019 and 2020, from the graph that we have shown here, there were some substantial dips into that. I don't have the information as to what those dips were for, but I can get that for you.
So how much of the $17 million did we use to put in the general fund, the reserve fund? I'm sorry.
We allocated $10 million to offset maintenance and operation costs. So some revenues that we received that bounced back quicker than I told you that were anticipated. Some of those revenues moved back to the reserve. Those were not budgeted to be spent.
So the ARPA funds really boosted that revenue, that reserve fund?
Indirectly, yes, sir.
Well, so that was money that came from the government. Even though it's the citizens' money, it was money that came from the federal government that we weren't counting on. Now, if we didn't have that money right now, what would we be looking at? I mean, would we be at a shortfall? Or, you know, we've tripled the amount that we're supposed to have in our reserve fund, you know, our money that we have to have for emergencies.
Yes, sir.
If we left that at doubled, we would still be in great shape, right?
I have concerns that I've spoken about. I think we're in good financial shape. I would not say that we are in poor financial shape. I do have concerns about the future based on this last budget here.
I'm kind of, you know, being on the council as long as I have, we jumped when that COVID money came in. That was just, you know, the game we played, moving it in and out of budgeted areas and putting it in the reserve funds. Hey, that's okay. I understand that. But I have a problem now. We're not, we're not going to do a cost of living raise to our employees, and it's gonna, it's gonna hurt us, I think. It's gonna hurt the employees. We've got all this money sitting there that, you know, we're anticipating what if, what if. We're tripled the amount of money that we've been told for many, many, many years that we have to have. So why can't we use some of that for other things besides just letting it sit there? Now, I know we used it for a pickleball court. That's only $300,000. That's mere pennies on the dollar, what we're using it for. We've used it for fire trucks, a million and a half here and there, and once or twice since I've been up here. But we're talking $20 million worth of money that we don't really, we didn't really anticipate it having. And I applaud you for saving the money. I do. But cutting down to the chase on it, I feel like the majority of it came from the ARPA funds. And, you know, you can wash it back and forth and say, well, we took it out of this budget and we replaced it with this budget. But that money was already budgeted in the budget when we started this, and then getting that $7.5 million for two mays in a row, that just boosted us up, and we just moved the money from one place to the other. So I know we've done really well at saving money and everything, but I think it's time that we dipped into it for things that we need to use it for, other than anticipation, you know. I mean, I'm almost at retirement age. I know how it goes. I understand that, you know.
I'd like to make a few points.
I'm not through yet, Michelle. Okay, please, ma'am. So I would appreciate less looking at that and knowing where the money came from. Once we get to that point, you know, I don't have a problem spending it, because it goes to these people out here. It doesn't go to that bank account up there on what ifs, you know. So we're tripled the amount of money we're supposed to have there. If there are plans to use any of it somewhere else besides, are you gonna use it in the CIPs? Any of it in the CIPs?
I will, I will recommend options that I think are reasonable for us or for expenses. We've used large segments of fund balance in the past to start, like, vehicle equipment replacement programs, where, when I came here in 2000, the year that I came here, they bought not one vehicle for the entire fleet, not for PD, not for fire, not for public works. We have a replacement plan for fleet.
Well, I understand all that. I do understand that.
I will tell you that the replacement fund, we don't have that for fire engines. Fire engines are a million and a half. We have eight fire stations, and ladder trucks are two, and ambulances are half a million. We have those as a replacement plan. In my opinion, those things that create a revenue stream long-term that are sustainable to maintain the public safety aspect of fire department, that would be something. What do I think? If you're asking me from a gut, from the hip, I think that's probably a $7 million to an $8 million starter fund to get the engines and ladder trucks and, on a replacement schedule, that's a significant portion of it. But like I have told council, I will come with ideas and options if you guys ask me to do that, but that is definitely not what I'm here to do. My job to do it on the annual budget that I prepare is to identify as much of a balanced budget that I can and notify you of the things that aren't included that I think need to be. And one of those that this year is, is a fire engine for a million and a half.
Well, we've done that two or three times. So I understand that. I don't have, I don't have an issue with that. Public safety has to come number one around here. We've never denied fire trucks, police cars, or anything like that, because it's just, it's a given that they have to take care of the citizens with. But my deal is, we've, we're two, we've got two-thirds more than we're requested to hold, or we've had, and we've never dipped into that money in the past, and we've able, we've been able to sustain everything as it is going now without that extra $20 million. For years, previous years before 2020, I've never been told that we had to go into any of that reserve funds. Now, I know there's, there's issues of storms and everything else that can come up that we got to get in there, but we've got an excess amount there that I think we need to use in other areas, you know.
And that's certainly council's prerogative, and I'm not trying to take that position contrary to you. I will tell you that my initial one, my one-time expenditures that I've cut from the departmental requests that I've cut for proposing to the city council are $2.1 million this year.
Okay.
Ms. Kimbo.
While I make my points, Megan, will you look up the definition of ARPA funds and what local governments are allowed to use those on? I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Pearl, because wisdom comes with sitting on councils and leading people, but also, we are not in the same economy we were on in 2016. That's when I graduated college. That was a much better economy than we are in now. Also, as a small business owner, I know we took out certain grants that had constrictions, as well as I know ARPA funds have constrictions. Which one of those constrictions in budgetary needs is able to offset certain costs, as well as it's supposed to be used for times of emergency, things of that nature? I think that a misconception right now is that everybody's perceiving that there's just money sitting there. This is not operational money. This is money from our savings. As I've talked to many of my citizens, they're proud of the stance that I've been taking in regards to saving their savings, because my district has people that are representative of multiple generations. Many of them living off their savings or their social security and having to make budgets even on their own. And there's young people, young families moving in, having to work extra jobs, living paycheck to paycheck. I think in a, I don't think anyone is negating us needing pools or needing aquatics in Longview. I'm just weary that this is not the time to be talking about those things, when we have critical infrastructure needs. Like, I know that MLK Street needs to be repaired. I know there's drainage in Spring Hill, as well as numerous asphalt streets or roads, like McCann Road, there are major artillery roadways that need a lot of work. I'm in support of Mr. I, I'm in support of Mr. Albertson, what he said yesterday during our work session about having an aquatics plan because if the aquatics plan says that Stamper's a great place to have the pool, I will 100% support that. If the aquatics plan says that it's West Longview or Pine Tree, I will support that. But I think our citizens deserve data that empirically tells us where we can put something. And even then, if we were to do an aquatic study, I would like to see that being utilized like the comprehensive plan. And although things are identified, that doesn't mean that we have the funds to spend on it. And that's why I'm a fan of putting it to the voters for them to decide in overwhelming amounts. Even like when we get elected, over 51% of people have to put us back in the seat for us to make decisions. It should be the same for when we use their funds, particularly their savings. I really think we should stop making this a historical issue or our side versus what side. We are Longview. We are all one together. And I think something that affects us all the same, no matter what our socioeconomic status is, safety, streets, science and sewers. If we couldn't even pay down on our fireman's pension fund because we didn't have enough money in our general reserves or even in our operational budget to pay that down, and we had to take that to the voters and ask them for money to pay that liability down, I just don't see how we can ask them for a pool during this time. I have various other points I'd like to make, but I know other council members do as well. But the main one I'm trying to make is that if we are going to have a pool, we need a data-driven approach of where to put it. We need to take our time making sensible and timeless decisions that will transcend councils and that won't have a long-term detrimental generational impact by acting rashly and not planning properly. And something that I heard a lot today from my constituents, they didn't even talk to each other, it was various of them. They said, you know, I think in today's time, I think we have felt that a pool is a luxury we've gotten accustomed to, but it's not a need right now. Do we need that? Yes. But there's other public community partners that we should be looking at. Because as we've heard from Judge Dow and other people as big like UT Tyler or these big developments come, it's, it's not just one government entity doing it. It's, it takes teamwork. It takes public-private partnerships to make these things work. And it, it takes thinking outside the box and funding, and finding external revenue sources like grants or maybe finding a way to give historical designation two pieces of land that we can then petition grants for. And I think that we need to get away from the mindset of thinking we have money in operations and we have money in our savings. Let's just use it all. No. I think that we need to be creative council members and find external revenue sources that will have the most long-term positive impact on every single one of our districts. And with that, I'm done.
Mary, your honor, are we still on?
We are still on A, yes.
We haven't quite got to that yet, right?
Yes, we are still.
Can we, can we get there?
Yes. Do you want to talk about fund balance?
That is the fund balance.
So I do want to say the city has done a fantastic job as far as doing the prudence that needed to be done. The ARPA money was a one-time revenue source, right? And the way you do this is if you are having, if you're using unrestricted money that you need to do for budgeted items, but you have restricted money that you can actually use that funds for those same purposes, you want to use the restricted funds before you use the unrestricted funds. And so what happened was they used the restricted funds for the identified items that can be used that way. So it would free up the unrestricted funds. And that is what built up the fund balance, all right? So that is fiscal responsibility. That's prudence. It allows us more flexibility. It allows us to talk about what we can do with this money, what the public and the taxpayers want to do with this money because of that forward-thinking and looking. So commend the city on that and all the stuff that they did. That is the right fiscal responsibility thing, choice to be done. So the other thing is, this is still the taxpayer's money, all right? Just because it's in the fund balance doesn't mean it's not the taxpayer's money. It's still theirs. But instead, what we wanting to do is make it district money. That's what this is like. We're trying to make it district money. And that's not doing the serving of the needs of the community. Also, by having this, by having this large fund balance has been a blessing for Longview because we're getting over 4% interest rate on that money. We are making money on that money. Also, our bond rates, which we needed to do for the pension bond and other things, the bond rates are lower and better because we get better terms because of our strong financial situation. All right, so it's not like it's the end-all for money to be there. It's actually very prudent to do. And since it was one-time revenue, we need to spend it on one-time expenses or unexpected cost. That's what you need to do on because we don't have it for reoccurring expenses to pay for salaries and other things that have to come from that. Now, understand, we can look at historically and what is done there, then and there. The state legislature laws have changed dramatically since then. We all know how that has happened. We also know how the economy and inflation has impacted many of us here. So it's not the same environment. We got to look at the environment that we are in today. And when we budget and we do a balanced budget, it's looking at what we have today and what our situation is now. So I agree, let's use a portion of the fund balance. But I believe that we should get through this budget process, which we haven't even done yet. And we're already looking at trying to add to it. Let's get through that budget to let the taxpayer tell us how to spend it in regards to what the wants, not the needs are. The wants or not the needs are before making a decision on that. So the, the fund balance, that is there. And it's a great thing. It's a blessing for Longview. And again, I commend the city for their effort and their work on getting that done. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Moore.
Fund balance. So y'all just mentioned that the, that the city employees won't get a raise of living increase, correct?
That's, my current proposal does not include that, yes, ma'am.
So no matter if we do a pool or not, that's not going to affect that decision?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And then how many grant writers do we have?
We have one.
We have one grant writer?
Yes, ma'am.
And how many grants would you say that she's robbed for overall for like the city of Longview and things that we needed when stuff happens and we went to those grants?
We, we've, we've gotten a large number. So I've got a big spreadsheet at my, at my office.
It's a large, it's a large number of grants that are available because we have an excellent grant writer that writes grants.
Working to diversify that revenue.
Exactly. And that's always able to get money for certain things. And for us to say that a community pool is not a need, I think that the taxpayers would disagree that it is a need. So whether we spend it out of the fund balance or not, I don't want it to be said that this is something they want. This is a luxury. This is a need to help a community. It's not just something we're doing on whim. And as far as the maintenance, y'all saying that it's a reoccurring expense, we closed a pool. That was already a maintenance expense. That pool's gone.
That, in the, and respectfully, the, the, the maintenance costs for that pool that we closed are not included in my budget proposal. Just, I mean, it is in this year.
We brung up the budget about the MLK streets and all that. Isn't that already in our CIP budgets? Isn't that, but is there not budgeted already? So when y'all sent over the email with the $14 million that's going to the Longview Exhibit Center, and we asked for a detailed thing about what's exactly going there. I know I personally asked for it. So we don't have that. But that went through committees, right? That 14 million?
It's not budgeted.
But, but the approval of the 14 million went through committees?
It was, it was in the CIP spreadsheet that I forwarded to city council at the mayor's request that listed all of the individual projects. You annually fund the first year of the CIP. The next four years are not funded. They're listed and identified as needs. So I would say that no funding's committed for that. They're just identified projects.
So there is no, when, we got the email for the $14 million for the Longview Exhibit that was decided in which committee?
So it's not, I don't, I guess I'm not sure what you mean by decided. It's on this, the capital improvement project list and it's approved by council annually during the budget process.
Okay, so where are we at on that? I'm just curious because we're talking about, hey, we, we want to go to the citizens for a vote if we're going to spend an X amount of dollars. But if we're spending $14 million in one project?
We're not.
Well, that's how it's listed.
It's on there as a project to do in the future.
But it's listed just as the Longview Exhibit, which is the MODCOB. That's how it's listed, right or wrong?
Yes, on the compilation you got, there's a summary of some of them, yes. And I think on the capital.
exhibit, it had $14 million.
There, there were about 12 different projects that made up that number. I don't have them. He's, he's, he's looking at it. But there's, there's a number of them that are smaller in nature that populate that.
From the MODCOB?
Yes, ma'am.
That's it for the budgets.
Okay, Mr. Conley.
I wanted to discuss the fund balance. And I appreciate you, Mr. McPhee, although I'm a new to city council. I have with 95 million, our school district has about half that. Our tax money comes from the same ways. Our legislative issues are the same. You did say, and I, and I came into this position, I agree with everything that's been said about taxpayer money and being conservative with it, making sure we're making the smart decisions. But you went back, when you talked about ARPA, and there's been a few discussions about restrictions. But we put $10 million of ARPA money into maintenance and facility, maintenance and operations. And I'm, have experience in fund balances and how maintenance and operation works. And, and the school system, and you mentioned when you went through the first, your first presentation, some of the ways the monies have been spent. And the way, the way maintenance and operation can be spent, and I'm correct on this, is upkeep of buildings and facilities. Would you agree with that?
The restrictions on the $10 million that I say offset, there's some specific language that if Angela were here, she could tell you. But they were mainly related to public safety and responding to the pandemic. So it wasn't, it wasn't that, there was a portion beyond that that could be sent, spent on certain projects. But they had to deal with typically like the Clean Water Act and the Surface Drinking Water Act and some other things like that. So we had a very small window of the things that we could accomplish with those. And that's how that 7 million. Again, I will tell you, as I've told, as I told Councilman Pearl, our revenues bounced back quicker during, David, it was in the time of my predecessor. The revenues bounced back quicker. But there was actually, if I'm remembering right, and I'm gonna look over at Mary Ann, I think, I think we had a hiring freeze that we implemented midway through. We didn't fill existing positions. And so there were a number of things that also caused that revenue to increase. So I'm definitely not trying to be evasive to any, any council member. My, my, my point is just, there, there's, there's a, there's a way some of that, those things rolled out that, that are a little bit different than just that simply. I think when you look at it in general, I think that's safe to assume what you're, you're saying. But how we file those, how we spend those monies with the federal government's restrictions, we have to make sure we're checking the boxes on those. So that's why I'm being very specific in how I answer those questions.
I was just referring to the 10 million that you referenced for ARPA because that was, that's been implied that that was, there's restrictions and there may be restrictions. But normally, fund balance can be, you usually dip into fund balance for the maintenance of facilities that need to be upkeep, that need better upkeep. Was that, is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir. I will tell you in response, we have worked extremely hard to program maintenance of our buildings as well as our vehicles and our systematic replacement in our annual operating budget. So I will tell you, that's not typically our nature to go straight to that. When we have new roofs that are needed on building or new energy improvements, we typically include those within our operations and maintenance budget within the Public Works Facilities Department. There have been times, sure. But we have worked extremely hard to pull in that maintenance and recurring maintenance costs so that we don't wind up needing those one-time revenues as much.
And so, again, with maintenance and operation, I know things, you can have emergency issues. We can have things that happen. But being able to maintain what we have, it's been also said, and I, again, I'm very conservative. And I know, I want to get off, we know we're moving past this fund balance topic. But I want to be clear here. The savings that we have, the last meeting, we, we began a demolition on a project that was a swimming pool. And I know we're not on the swimming pool. But that, the reason we demolished that pool is because it had not been maintained properly, okay? And so the money, a lot of money that we have in this savings could have been used to better maintain that pool. So that's all, that's my last statement.
I am going to move us on to Presentation B, which is Presentation Regarding Capital Improvement Projects and City Council Policy Regarding Same.
Mayor, Council, Mr. McPhee, thank you for this opportunity to discuss CIP. The CIP was established by council policy in 2001. This creates a five-year capital improvements project list. And it's a fluid document based on input from citizen, public meetings, council, projects, master plans. We have those things develop that list. And the CIP project can be anything like acquisition of land, construction addition to facilities, major repairs of over $100,000, major equipment purchases over $100,000, and studies and projects that the, a master plan established. So if a master plan says, hey, we think this project needs to be done, then that can be included as part of that CIP project. We use a priority and urgency factor to determine the rating of those CIP projects. But those, those things become quite fluid. I gave the example the other day of George Ritchie. So if TechDOT decides we're going to widen George Ritchie and they say you need to move your utilities, that certainly moves up on the priority list because now we've got to get the utilities moved up. And so that'll be a higher priority on that CIP list. Here's some of the guiding documents that we use. Some that are not included on here is the MPO, which is Metropolitan Planning Operation. They, they prepare a transportation plan. And that plan is used as far as the transportation on, on our network. And also like the MODCOB master plan is not listed here. But a lot of the MODCOB, we had MODCOB master plan developed. And then we can just follow that list and say, hey, these are the priorities that have been identified in that plan. So currently, there's 88 projects on the CIP list. Total dollar amount of $151.9 million. So you can see there's quite a bit there. Here are a few of the most notable projects that we can see on the plan, like the Silver Falls widening, sidewalk improvements, MLK Complete Street, we talked about that, Forest Street. Many of these things, though, are not funded. This, this just puts us on priority list on the CIP to say, these are things that if we can establish grant money, if we can partner with TechDOT, if we can partner with the county, for instance, these are things that we could get done as a priority of our community. We just have to establish that funding. And with that, I will take the opportunity to say citizen, citizen comments are important as we develop this. The Longview Metropolitan Planning Organization is putting together the transportation plan, the Mobility 2050. So if a citizen wanted to click on that QR code, it would take him to a survey. And they could have input into what that transportation list looks like. And so we really appreciate that. And so we really appreciate that. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Archer?
Dwayne, Mr. Archer or Mr. McPhee, I remember a long time ago when I first got elected, I asked a question about capital improvement projects and how those were funded, and you guys told me that basically all the taxpayer money from every district is pooled together, and then it's, the capital improvements list is what decides, you know, depending on each budget cycle. Can you explain that a little more? I'm sorry if I'm doing a bad job.
Well, it's, all the, all the tax sales and property tax all comes in, and then we have this guiding document that says regardless of what district necessarily something's in, this is a priority for our community. And so then therefore, then we could budget, if we can, out of that, or look for other opportunities like grants and that kind of thing, yes.
Thank you. And you said McCann Road wasn't on there yesterday, which is a major artillery roadway. Do you know how, when or how that one could be added to the list?
I think you're, are you speaking of the shoulders on McCann?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's actually, we're going to try to work that internally, where our actual, our crews will do that work.
Okay.
So that's something we're looking at. So it's not, it's not on the CIP because we'll do that in our operations.
Okay, thank you.
McCann's a state highway, right?
It is not.
It's not?
No.
I believe she's talking about the McCann Road segment that breaks off from Spur.
Yeah, that's where the post office is.
That runs up beside the post office.
The post office?
Yeah. Yeah, it was old Station Eight, where Station Eight was, that road there, yeah.
Mr. Archer, I guess I do have two questions or confirmation please, that a lot of the capital improvement project list is based on master plans that the city has undertaken, and if we were to do an aquatics master plan, that that, those projects would be ultimately moved on to the capital improvements list and ranked by priority along with all of our other needs. Is that fair?
Yes, ma'am, they would, yes.
And that a lot of the projects that are on that list, because we have plans that support them, we are often able to find other funding partners like Tech Dot or other grants, but a lot of times that's the document we use to show support for how we ask other people to fund those projects. Is that fair?
Yes, it is. And, and master plans and having it on the CIP increase our chances of getting grant money.
Yeah, and I suppose this one is just a statement, but the way that I look at our fund balance there, yes, we have 20 million in the fund balance. I understand our city manager to be saying he would feel more comfortable reserving more than the 10% that we have city council precedent for doing, but that if we are actually talking about what things are available to use for that 20 million, that really is council's preference. I mean, Mr. McPhee is saying he's not going to bring forward necessarily recommendations for us to use it, he may bring up items, but at the end of the day, it's, it's our decision. So we have 151 million of capital improvement project lists that could come out of fund balance. We have a presentation tonight about a pool that could come out of fund balance. Honestly, if we wanted to, we could vote to pull cost of living increases for the year out of fund balance at about 1.5 million. Probably not a great idea because how do you fund it the next year? But at the end of the day, I mean, that is our majority vote decision, so all of those things are essentially competing to be at the council's decision to determine how we're going to spend those money. And a lot of those things are infrastructure and public safety and other things that I think are our core job as a council to prioritize, but the capital improvement projects list is where we would pull typically to spend fund balance out of.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions otherwise for Mr. Archer? Thank you, Dwayne. I suppose next up is my update on City of Longview Aquatics Work Session and Mayor's Task Force. We had a really informative work session on Tuesday. I want to thank Mr. Albertson, who gave a very nice presentation on the current usage and history of our aquatics. It ended with a recommendation that city council approve and support an aquatics master plan, which is what I am here to recommend to you tonight. As we've all kind of alluded to, coming up later is a vote to use 3.5 million out of fund balance to build a pool at Stamper Park. My recommendation, which I'll put up there in just a minute, is to move forward with an aquatics master plan. And I guess I do want to be clear to council that we are really deciding one or the other. We can't do both. We simply just don't have the opportunity to do that. So if we do, by council majority vote tonight, approve the pool, we will not move forward with the master plan. If we do not approve the pool, we will move forward with the master plan. So that is, just for council's awareness, what I believe our decision is tonight. The, I did want to pull up a couple of slides, if you would, for me, for the pool usage. Mr. Albertson had presented to us just some information. I think Ms. Williams mentioned feasibility about pools and how much we would use them. This is the current year Ingram pool usage, and the projected amount of people to use Ingram pool in the 2024 season is 10,080 individuals. If you will go to the next slide, I think it's Jackman Splash Pad. I bet you like the splash pad, huh? The splash pad has only increased in use. We've not always, since we don't charge fees for the splash pad, we have not always maintained attendance numbers. So all we, we really have is this year's usage numbers. But I think if I were remembering, there's something like 54,000 people that have already used Jackman Splash Pad this year, and we estimate 108,000 will use the splash pad this year. If you'll go to the next slide, this is showing the aquatics facility usage between all of our facilities. So Paula Martin Jones, which is not open for recreation use, it is only open for members, that's the white line here that you see. Ingram Pool is the yellow line, and then Jackman Splash Pad is the green line. So I appreciate Mr. Albertson's work to bring those things to us. What I learned on Tuesday is that we have lowering usage of pools and increasing use of splash pads in our community. If you would go to the next, and here is the aquatics numbers, just all in one spot, what we would project to be the usage there in the community. And next, I believe, is, oh, cost of operations. So of course, that's important. One thing that I know we don't know about a new pool is what it would cost to maintain. So yes, we theoretically have money in the fund balance to capitally pay to build a new pool. We do not, in the current budget, know what maintenance would be, and we don't have that budgeted for the, the upcoming years. Paula Martin Jones costs 316,000 annually, Ingram 124,000 annually, Longview Swim Center was right at 200,000 annually, and the splash pad is 13,000 annually. If you would go to the next slide, please, I think that's a breakdown of cost per use. So we talk about being fiscally responsible with taxpayer money, the splash pad is clearly the biggest bang for your buck. Now, I'm not saying that if an aquatic study came back and said, the City of Longview needs to build a pool, hundreds of thousands of people would use it, and it would be very important to our youth, I would 100% support that, and why not Stamper Park? Absolutely. I have no inclination on location, I would support whatever the citizens of Longview told us through an aquatic master study. But if you ask me, I simply do not have enough data tonight to say that I think we should take money out of fund balance and build a pool. I just do not believe that would be fiscally responsible of us. But here you can see what the cost is per user at pools that we currently operate, as well as the splash pad. And then finally, I believe we have, Mr. Albertson had brought forth from staff, a recommendation to do a aquatic study, which would be very much in line with the comprehensive plan study that we've done in the past, with other master plan studies that the city has and relies upon, in helping us seven individuals point strategically to what the community as a whole wants. I think that's, that's just very important. If you'd bring up the next slide, this would be my recommendation to council, to move forward with the recommendation for the aquatics master plan, to allow the appointment of a task force, which would be stakeholders for aquatics in our community, to convene those individuals in early August to determine the items that we want answered on the master plan. And those are items I would invite from council, from the public, but they should answer things like, look at our current facilities, are we using them to the best of our abilities? Can we do better? Do we need to keep them? Do we need to close some and have new facilities? What can we do with pools versus splash pads? We could provide a whole lot more in a whole lot of additional locations if we focused on splash pads. What does it look like with the opportunity with Longview ISD, who's recently approved a bond, of course? We do not know if they will allow use of their facility, if they do, what it will cost the city, what that looks like. We just simply don't know a lot of things, but those questions can have answers when we take the time to do a master plan. I would propose to bring to council as quickly as August 8th, a request for a budget amendment to pay for the aquatic study. I do believe, but do not have confirmation, that Longview Economic Development Corporation would likely assist in paying that, they typically have in the past, because they also believe in the importance of having comprehensive master plans. And also on that same agenda, I would be glad to bring to council what the master plan would address. When you go out for a request for bid, you give them what you are expecting them to answer, and that's what our community would tell them, what we need to understand, so that as a community, we could come back and say, we don't need this one thing, we need all of these things that will address all of our needs at one time, and we could do that comprehensively and hopefully in a united fashion. The master plan would take eight to 12 months, and I would anticipate at that time, the task force could bring a recommendation back to city council in August of 2025. Sorry, I talked fast, we did a lot on the other presentation items, and I know, I know everybody's tired of discussing things. I really, really want to encourage council to slow down, think about the amount of reserves that we have, the amount of other needs that there are, and consider moving forward with an aquatics master plan that would allow us time to gather information from all of our community, make sure that we have the feasibility to build pools, if that's what we're going to do, that we have the maintenance within our operating budget, so not only we can have the pool, but we can maintain it correctly, so we've not created the same problem for people 20, 30, 50 years down the line from us when we're not sitting in these seats. That is all that I have on that presentation item. We'll move forward now to the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull off or discuss?
Are we done discussing aquatics?
We can more, we'll of course have the action item at the end, so we're not done.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to bring up something that was discussed during our work session, that I feel is really important and that our citizens really should understand and consider as well. One of the things we discussed that Mr. Albertson did bring up was the fact that Longview actually has the capacity to withstand two pools, two outdoor pools, which I felt was a great benefit for us from that study, with the population, the size of Longview, what that swim study presents. The other thing, and I keep going back with Mr. McPhee here, and I apologize to him in advance, but there's this grant that we get approved for, which is a life safety, a learn to swim life safety, that every citizen, I'm sorry, every city should have the ability to have pools and aquatics for our citizens to be able to learn to swim as a self-preservation, as a life, kind of. What is the word, terminology? I'm sorry.
It's, it's, it's learn to swim, which that, that is how we got into the pool business to begin with, was the drowning epidemic in the late 60s. That is how the Longview Swim Center was built, through grants to get municipalities to better educate our community so that people would not drown, and so that, that learn to swim being the most critical aspect, the Public Safety Act's best aspect for everyone within our community.
Thank you for that. And those are just a couple of things that I felt that came out of that work session, and also communications with Mr. Albertson on the need for aquatics. So sorry for interrupting, Mayor.
Perfect. Yes, Mr. Conley, let's make comment.
As I was driving in for this meeting, I had a concerned citizen, I'm not sure exactly who she was, but she actually, her statistic that she gave me was that the number one cause of death in children one to four is drowning, the second, the number two cause of death is for children five to 12 is drowning. And she mentioned her granddaughter learned to swim at the Longview Swim Center, and she was faced with a challenging situation, that she would not have survived when she was five years old without that swim lesson instruction.
Can we, Mr. McPhee, will you just make some of the, I know we had a work session over this yesterday, so maybe some of the public out there is not aware of, we've discussed all this yesterday as well, but our, our responsibility to, to provide some safety, which is very important, as well as those grants, I know when we talked about them before, are they still available? And in regards to Mr. Albertson, what he talked about, was it a, is it a recommendation, a requirement? And just, I know we talked about this yesterday, but what our plan moving forward would be to provide swim safety initiatives for our community, which I think ultimately was the aquatic study, but.
Right, those, those were comments that I think, Mr. Conley, you actually asked me directly about that in the work session, and I said, we don't have options right now, right? We recently just hired the recreation, the aquatics recreation supervisor, who is obtaining his certifications to instruct people to learn to swim, to where, whether or not, and I mean this respectfully to all, whether you have a pool or not have a pool, the one thing I will tell city council that we need to figure out how to, how to do is teach learn to swim, regardless of the decision regarding, regarding the pools, wherever they may be, wherever they are not. The grants were, were federal from the 19, late 60s, early 70s, and that commitment we kind of made, to be honest with you, that when you take federal monies, they expect that long-term commitment to do that. So I think that if you read between the lines, it's kind of, that's what we signed up for. So I think I've been very clear from the, all communications with city council, that that's the one piece, regardless of whatever council decides to do, that we've got to figure out whether that be through. If we didn't have a pool, whether that be through community people that, or organizations that have pools, or, we've got to figure out how to crack that. And, and that is an obligation and something we should strive for. And I know that's at the top of Director Albertson's list, because that's, he's, it's been reflected in their most recent hires.
Can we make it clear that grants evolve, even though that grant that y'all are talking about was in the 70s, but grants do evolve and they change yearly, daily, on what we can apply for, for grants, as far as anything regarding pools, safety?
They're called for days, they're called for grants all the time, yes, ma'am.
All the time.
Is learn to swim, is that able to be done at Ingram and Paula Martin Jones?
Learn to swim at Ingram is actually where my children learn to swim, so yes, that's where my kids took instructions. We just, the, the lack of certified instructors, instructors, which I think, again, we talked about this at the, at the meeting, was that, that feeder line, or that, that spring league for baseball teams to develop the, the bench of players to move up into those roles, COVID really was a big hiccup in it, and, and that's why you've seen cities having the same struggle, having the lifeguard struggles, having the pool issues, most of the pools are 50 years old. We're not the, the good news is, I know everyone, it's very personal to everyone out there, the good news is, communities throughout the country, this is not Longview alone. Everyone is having these discussions, and they're very difficult discussions because people have passionate and connections to them, so.
And to follow on that, so, so, but is Paula Martin Jones available as an option too?
I don't know that we've done learn to swim at Paula Martin Jones.
We have utilized Paula Martin Jones in the past for learn to swim. There are challenges with that, based on the depth of the pool, but we, we do have the equipment to be able to work through that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, John.
Hold on, let me follow through real quick, I'm sorry. Now, does, does learn to swim also apply to private partnerships as well?
Yes, sir, that's an avenue. There are private providers, I mean, that's one of the things that I think when Director Albertson is talking about those studies, those are the things that they try and identify to leverage and see what kind of resources and bandwidth the community has to provide those services.
And then another follow-up question, this may be sent for Laura, too. The parks master plan that we passed, that we got through, and if we did an aquatic study, would that open up availability for more grants? Laura, would you speak, would you speak up, Laura? I'm sorry. There's a microphone, Dwayne, no, don't get, Dwayne, get her microphone right there.
Can I piggyback on your grant question?
I'm sorry, Laura. I'm sorry, Laura.
Having a master plan is critical, especially one that has, let me put it, scientifically obtained citizen data, is critical to getting us to a really great grant application. Survey Monkey won't do it, okay? We really need that because it's showing that a certain percentage of the population really feels that's important, and therefore is worthy of the investment in our community.
Thanks.
So I don't think aquatics, I think trails were toward the top on the exit, on the current map, Parks Master Plan you just approved, so because aquatics is not at the top, that park master plan would not really get us the impetus to write a really great grant.
So the aquatic study would help?
It would help massively.
Tremendously for that. Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Laura. And also, thank you for your team, because we have the best grant team. Thank you.
On the topic of grants, I just didn't want you to leave, sorry. I know that, as I was doing some research on grants and grant opportunities in particular, because I know everyone, a lot of municipalities right now are struggling with wanting and being able to build a pool, and so some, some municipalities have tried getting like historic designation for certain buildings. Do you know if Paula Martin or Ingram could ever even qualify to be a historic site for those types of grants?
They're vintage, they're not.
They're vintage, not historic? Okay.
They were built in the 50s, so, no.
I didn't know if there was a, like a different.
Ingram, no. I mean, it was just kind of a motel pool, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. I will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that council would like to pull off for discussion or further information, or do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to zoning items, first zoning item A, a application for number Z 2409 filed by the City of Longview requesting a rezone. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and Mr. McPhee. The City of Longview is requesting to rezone property located here at the southeast corner of East Pirate Avenue and Pine Tree Road, from general retail shown on this map, to single-family, four zoning district. Currently, there is a single-family home on one of the lots, and we have a permit in to build another single-family home on the corner lot. The previous zoning ordinance permitted single-family homes within this zoning district. However, the current UDC does not, therefore, the properties are considered non-conforming. In order to correct this, we are requesting to rezone these properties to single-family. The Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Choi? The public? The public, here, I will open the public hearing for this item. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Having no speakers, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve this.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zoning item is approved. Thank you, Ms. Choi. Zoning item B, application number Z 2410 filed by Southern States Equipment LLC. Ms. Choi?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property located at 4633 West Loop 281 from agricultural, seen in this green, to heavy commercial zoning district. Currently, the property owner is requesting this rezone in order to operate a large equipment rental and sales and storage. The property was annexed into the city in 2009, and when annexation occurs, the agricultural designation is automatically assigned to this property. When the property redevelops or develops, it needs to be rezone. Therefore, this request is before y'all. West Loop 281 is classified as a principal arterial roadway and maintained by tech stat, and this development is appropriate along these roadways as long as access management is followed. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Choi. Any questions for Ms. Choi? This item does require a public hearing, which I will open at this time, and I do have one speaker card from Christia Mudd.
I think he's just here to answer any questions.
Are you here for questions? Okay. All right. Having no other speaker cards, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zoning item is approved. Thank you so much, Ms. Choi. Next on our agenda is action item. Consider an ordinance amending the budget for the City of Longview for fiscal year 2324 by allocating fund balance in the amount of an estimated 3.5 million for construction of a public swimming pool at Stamper Park. Ms. Moore and Mr. Wade, I will turn it over to you.
Just as stated before, even when Mr. Albertson's made his statement about Stamper Park, and even before me even deciding to put this on the agenda at Stamper Park, one of the main things, concerns that we had before we decided, well, for council voted to close down the Longview Swim Center, the biggest issue was that it wasn't on city property. And so Stamper Park is on city property. Stamper Park sits on 16 acres of land. Stamper Park already has parking. Stamper Park already has restrooms. Those were all the requirements that y'all stated that y'all wanted going forward for the next pool for Longview. So those are, and I just moved for a motion to vote. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So, those were the minimum requirements in regards to like the location being an issue with Pine Tree ISD, so with the swim center. Now, we still don't know a lot of questions with that. So Stamper Park does check off some boxes and stuff like that, but as we've already talked about, we don't know what the, the target is of what are, what is our goal? And how do we achieve that goal? So what is the target age that we want to reach? What's the safety? Is it the safety that we want to reach in this entertainment? What's the amenities that we want? How many pools do we need? Where do we locate those pools? Are they indoor or outdoor pools? Staffing cost, what are the operating costs, what are the maintenance costs? How many visitors do we want to have? What cost per visitor do we, are we looking to get? Or do we just care that we could say we have a pool somewhere? What about partnerships that we can look into? Either that being with Lico, Gregg County, private partnerships. What about grant options that we can use to help, also help save taxpayers money to do these things and do more? What is LISD going to do? What is Branches of Hope going to do? So, there's all these different things that we don't know, and we really need to, to get these answers and have, go through the process of doing the aquatic study for that. And so this has delved into a location argument and not a community solution. And so I'm in favor of city aquatics program, and I believe it is essential to the community. The Park Master Plans also indicates that it's essential, and the community wants it. But maybe if we go through the process of an aquatic study, we get the feedback of the community, we have due diligence, we can possibly get something at Stamper Park that's even better than the bare minimum pool there, and make it where Stamper Park's a destination for the community and for all of everybody. And that's really what I want to see. I don't want us to settle for just what we're given. Let's, let's really look at this and see what we can really do there and give the community something to, to be proud of and have. Thank you.
I'd just like to make a statement. I'd like to echo a lot of what Mr. Newstad said. I think that with a lot of these meetings, sometimes it's hard for me to remember to repeat what I've already stated here at the council meeting, but I do want to publicly state that I am for the, I am for aquatics and parks and recreation in our city and quality of life items. But I'm in support of data-driven approaches to see what is the best solution for those. I agree with Mr. Newstad on all those points he made, and furthermore, in my support of the aquatic study, I would hope and like to see it being utilized similar to the comprehensive plan, that although we identify these needs, we furthermore and get empirical data such as was stated with, through a voting process that is able to go through the checks and balances of checking each voter with their address to make sure that that is what they truly want for the overwhelming amount. I would love nothing more than to see multiple pools in Longview if that's what people want, and if we have the money, whether that's at Stamper or Spring Hill or Pine Tree, any of these areas. And like Mr. Newstad stated, I don't want us to just, just rashly spend money because we feel that we've been ostracized when, if we could just take a step back, work together and figure out a solution and get this aquatic study. And if it says it's at Stamper or other places, then that's great. And furthermore, than just a pool, like a destination pool or something that would bring in funds because pools don't really make money. And so our job is to provide quality of life items while also coming up with strategic approaches to finding funding for those things. And I think the other thing we can't forget is regardless of what our decisions are is we really need to focus on that swim safety aspect. I know that when I first immigrated here from Mexico, that's where I learned to swim, was the Longview Swim Center as well. And another point that was made yesterday that I don't want to be missed is that we did not close Pine Tree down because, simply because it was not on city property. It was because of an access issue, because we were not able to access it year-round. And when that pool was built, was when Pine Tree was an open campus. It's no longer an open campus. With the way that the society is right now, I don't feel, like, I agree. I don't think we should have people going there behind, during school hours where they could potentially put our kids at risk. So I think that whether that is renting somewhere or on city property, whatever the most fiscally responsible decision is while still meeting the needs of our citizens is what we should do. I think our job as city council members is to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money and to have the bird's eye view as well as the frontside view on how we should spend this money. I know that people want aquatics. I know people want quality of life stuff, but I also know people want critical infrastructure things done as well. And so I think we should take a step back. First step should be to have this aquatic study, and then whatever that dictates, then we should work together as a team to make sure that happens. And make sure that, I think the most important lesson we can learn from this is too, is to make sure that we are also holding responsible our staff and everybody else to make sure they're maintaining our parks and maintaining our facilities, which I think a lot of them are. I think mistakes happen, and the best thing that we can do now is move forward and not just have a rash decision that could have generational impact. I think I made a lot of my other statements earlier. I would just like to have it on record that I am in support of aquatics. I am in support of quality of life issues, but I'm in support of having a data-driven approach that tells us exactly where to put those and how to be good stewards of our taxpayer funds.
Mr. Conley?
So, I just want to say, the issue, Ms. Campbell, you know, you mentioned access, and that was one of the reasons for the closure. But the primary reason the closure has, is that it wasn't maintained, and it wasn't, we didn't do, as the city, we did not do a good job of upkeep and taking care of the responsibility of, of that pool. And that's why there's dirt on top of it now. I'm, I've been an advocate since I've been here. We've had this discussion, I guess, this is my, in three of the four meetings I've been here. And I know this is a tough decision financially. I understand that, but I mean, I've been an advocate from the beginning of community, family, engagement, activities, the learn to swim. And I just wanted to be aware of people, people have mentioned the work study that we did. And, and I, I agree, the work study would be a great opportunity if it would have been done about two years ago, or a year and a half ago, when, when we discovered this was a problem. Now we're in a situation where we don't have a pool other than Ingram. We don't have swim lessons right now. We just addressed that. Mr. Ray addressed the, the need for learning to swim and opportunities possibly for some grants. And I've, at, at, at the last, at two of the last three meetings, I said, I feel like our community needs activities but also needs swim safety. And so I understand this is a very tough decision, and I know we're in, in a spot where we may be trying to correct other mistakes, but we've also got to do what's best for our kids. And when we have anyone that doesn't have the opportunity to learn to swim, and we don't provide that as a city, I, 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 that's tough to live with as a city councilman.
Yeah. I would only just point out, to be clear to everybody, we have a pool that people could learn to swim at now. We do not need to build a pool for that. We need to add additional staff with certifications. That's the current problem. Is that right, Roland?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. I just want to be clear about that. Building the pool is not going to cause us to have the ability to teach kids to learn how to swim. We have two pools where kids can learn to swim. We just need to staff correctly. Yes.
I just wanted to add, because I'm in support of this pool at Stamper Park, and I think there's some reasons that everyone should know why I am. There are several reasons. One, it's promoting community health and wellness. We know South Longview is one area that could use this and deserve this. Two is addressing the inequities that happens in Longview. And without something such as a pool in South Longview, you know, this pool will have the ability to bring that to the citizens of South Longview. Enhancing the quality of life, you know, a new pool can enhance the quality of life of residents in this underserved area that we feel like we have missed out on opportunities to get a pool in the past. Economic development, Stamper Park, Broughton Park, South Longview all deserves and needs the ability to have some economic development. Having a new pool will do that. It will bring visitors. It will create events and things of that sort that will develop it. Youth development is another area that is a major concern that this pool in South Longview will bring. As we all know, us that are here from Longview, including myself, I learned to swim at Broughton Recreation Center, the old Armstrong Pool. It was a crucial part of my childhood. Unfortunately, our youth in South Longview has missed out on this opportunity. Growing up, how I did in South Longview, it literally worked as a, and asset for my family. My mom knew where she was dropping me off. She knew I was learning to swim. She knew I'd be safe, and she knew I would be there when she finished work to come pick me up. Another thing that this would do, of course, in creating economic development, it would also help and create the, increase the property value of a lot of our homes in South Longview. As we know, it's debilitating strictly and strongly. We're losing value in our houses and our properties. Anything that we can do to stimulate that would be a benefit. And not to mention the last thing, and what we need so desperately in South Longview, and I will say this, I'll fight for this pool at Stamper Park. And when the time comes, I'll fight for the pool at Broughton Park because what it does is it brings an element of community cohesiveness that we have missed out on for so many years. And if there are some people here that are old enough to remember Armstrong Park or Armstrong Pool, it brought a certain element of community cohesiveness to us. It was a place to where we all kinda focused and/or we all kind of used as an area to meet and to grow that community. Those are my areas of, of this. I know I'm on this. I know I'm a huge supporter of it. I'm a huge supporter for South Longview District Two and/or District Three.
And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I actually think I have a motion from Shannon at the very beginning to approve. Do I have a second? Second from Mr. Wade. I will call for the vote. All in favor of approving the action item, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate. Motion carries. The action item is approved. That concludes the meeting. We'll move on to items of community interest. Mr. Conley, you're up first.
Yeah, I just want to, I think Richard got that. This just happened this week. I'm really proud, represent our district in Pine Tree ISD. Each year, we do a, a retreat where we bring in our leadership and try to build our own leaders and also talk about our values. And this just happened, so I appreciate we, we established this. But I just wanted to share, there's a lot of great things happening in public education, and it happens when teams come together, establish trust and values, and I'm just really proud of the things we're doing at Pine Tree, and I just want to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moore?
I just want to say congratulations, Stamper Park.
Mr. Wade?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Newstad?
I don't have any slides, but I did, I want to say also, welcome to Dr. Shepherd for LISD Superintendent. Thank you for coming in and introducing yourself. We appreciate that greatly. And then also, the Laugh Out Longview Festival was this last weekend. I was out of town unfortunately on a, on a prior engagement, but it was a great success. So thank you, Longview, for going out and supporting the arts and supporting the comedy and festival and theater in Longview. And if it's not for y'all, we wouldn't be able to make this an annual thing. So hopefully there's more to come. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell?
Not a book on the shelf, but our blueprint for, if you want your chance to be heard for the next 10 to 15 years, Monday, July 17th at 5:30 at the Maude Cobb, there is a public meeting. This is open to the public. We want your input. You can also go ahead and give us your input on longviewtexas.gov/plan. This will be covering everything that has to do with quality of life, neighborhood livability, and various other aspects of our community. So please come out and make sure they have your voice heard. July 30th at the Gregg County Courthouse, please join us, the county and various other partners to fight against World Trafficking Day. So please come out for a prayer, prayer gathering, asking the Lord to please combat sex trafficking in our area. And Friday, October 18th, there's Drive to Aspire Golf Challenge. So please sign up for that on the Aspire website. That is on our city website. And please help give some funds to those that are mentoring our youth.
Mr. Pirtle?
Nothing for me.
Mr. McPhee?
Yes, actually, this past Tuesday, we had our 10-year breakfast, which is, I'm always glad to see the employees as they've reached a certain level of tenure within the, within the city service. I'd like to recognize those employees with five years of service. That's Officer Dylan Hartsfield, Kirby Hewitt, Chris Calhoun, Stefan Jones, Cody Calhoun, David Reed, the fire driver engineer Colin Moore and Jared Wilson. Those with 10 years of service were Larry Kirkland, Always Smiling, and fire driver engineer Bradford Conrato and Albert Chapman. And with 15 years of service, we have, it is now our newly elected section chief for EMS, Officer James Lars, Lawrence, firefighter Jeffrey Garrison, and Randy Driggers. And with 20 years of service, if you guys have seen him out in the distribution system, we send him out for water quality issues all the time. His name is Keith Murray. So, thank you, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you. I have a couple of things. Just an announcement, on our upcoming meetings, next Thursday, we will have our special called City Council meeting for the budget. So on Thursday, July 18th, we will have Mr. McPhee present the proposed budget for the upcoming year. We will not meet on our regularly scheduled Thursday, July 25th. So please mark that on your calendar if you plan to join us. Animal Shelter Advisory Committee meetings have been scheduled. Recently, council tasked the Shelter Advisory Committee to look at public safety concerns related to unrestrained animals. The committee will meet July 16th, August 15th, and August 27th to consider those concerns, this time actually at the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center. So please join them there. Lastly, I would like to congratulate UT Tyler Longview Campus and thank them for their investment in Longview. Yesterday, they had their groundbreaking for the new 10,000-square-foot annex, which will include 65-person classroom, lab space, and will expand their nursing program. So we are very grateful to them for seeing a need in our community and stepping in to help us address the need for healthcare and helping support our employers and our youth. That's just really awesome. So thank you for your investment in our community. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, guys.